I think we're ready to go. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wilmete Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Coling.
Here.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Ms. Chalk Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, and I don't know how many there are, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based on the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at the next regularly scheduled meeting on December 10th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The Village Board has final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The Village Board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule if this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application. In order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five of seven Village Board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. The board does not operate by -- this board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on any given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, this application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, we have seven members. Tonight, it looks like we have only four, although we may have -- we have only five, although I see the sixth member arriving just in time. So we will need four of the six to approve an application. Since we do not have a full seven members here tonight, we give the applicant who are scheduled to come before us tonight the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on the schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is December 4th. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive comments, arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door when you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and state us exactly, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from the village staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it's not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, but we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say "I do." Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case?
Our first case is 2019 Z40, 435 Prairie Avenue. This is a request for a 9.17-foot front yard stoop setback variation, a 14-foot front yard step setback variation, and a 187.23-square-foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a front stoop and steps.
Anybody here for the applicant? Would you please come up? Please take your name and address, please.
Yes, good evening, board. My name is James O'Brien. I live at 830 Park Avenue in Wilmete.
This relates to the Prairie Avenue application?
That's correct. Yeah, I'm the contractor. The homeowners are here. If you'd like to speak with them, you can, but I'll be happy to answer any questions. You will tell me what would work best for you based, Lisa, on what the case is.
Well, we may want to hear from the homeowners, but please go ahead. Proceed.
Sure.
You're acting on behalf of the owners?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So the reason we're here before you tonight is, and again, in spirit of keeping my comments brief, I'm going to stay brief, and then if you have specific questions for me, of course, I'm here. They have a 100-year-old home on a very difficult lot, very tight. You guys have seen it. Prairie Avenue itself offers some challenges for people trying to reconstruct their front stoops, stairs, et cetera. The site had a very old deteriorating stair situation. They obtained a permit from the village to do such work, and their contractor filed into the category of unable to perform. They got ahold of our name. We came before the project and said, yes, we can help you. We agreed upon a price. We were working on said project. The inspector from the village of Wilmete came out to look at our framing inspection and said, oh, I really want to see a slightly different detail of the original drawing. It was woefully inadequate and really isn't showing me this, and I really want the drawing to match what you're doing. Okay? So we submitted said drawing to the community development department and then found out that the entire project was non-conforming and the permit shouldn't have been issued. Okay? So fortunately, the community developed with, in, I would say, a good dose of common sense, said, here's what you need to do. Let's complete the project. Let's, of course, then go before you folks tonight because you're going to need a variation to build the project. Even regardless of these plans, they wouldn't need a variation to do anything. So, Chairman, that's why we're here before you. Does that give you kind of a background?
I think that's very helpful. So the front, the porch and the steps have been built. I was by there. It has been completed.
It has. Yes, sir.
And it was based, there was kind of an issue again. There was a permit issued, and may have had a little bit of confusion surrounding the whole process.
Correct. And I think, again, the community development department knew what the situation was and said, listen, for the property safety, for, you know, the view from the streetscape, whatever, let's complete the project, and then, of course, you need to go before the board. And again, that's why we're here tonight.
Any questions for the applicant's representative or the owners who are here?
Yes. So it appears that the previous staircase, I mean, when you looked at everything, was non-conforming.
Correct.
Now you have a new staircase that is sited a little bit differently, and you don't have the winding stairs or whatever, and it's marginally more non-conforming than the original was.
That's probably correct, yes.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, you can take a seat.
Okay.
And we will see if somebody on the board will make a motion.
Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have?
Does anybody? Oh, yes. Does anybody want to comment on this application other than the owners? Thank you. Seeing none, I think we need a motion. Mr. Sermon.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 9.17-front yard stoop setback variation, a 14-foot front yard setback variation, 187.25-square-foot or 13.02% front yard impervious surface variation to permit the construction of the front stoop and steps at 435 Prairie Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second that. Okay. I think it's fairly straightforward. I guess if they would have come in front of us, I'm not sure if I would have approved the six-foot depth on the porch, but it's only a foot or so. But I agree that it is a tight site. There are limitations, and the previous stairway that was there was unsafe and did not meet code, so I can support this.
I would agree. I took a little exception with a letter that was written by a neighbor in support of it, which stated that the hardship was the fact that the previous stairs were old and decrepit. That's not really a hardship. The hardship is based on the size of the lot or something particular to your property. And I think that the contractor and the homeowners actually did a very nice job. It's very attractive and very appropriate, and the setback from the front edge of the steps is equal to two or three other houses that are on the street, so I can support it. And I agree with Mr. Sermon that the landing area might have been a little bit smaller had you come to us ahead of time, but I think it's, I think we can support this and recommend it.
Any other comments?
I'm in support of approving this.
We're all ready to vote? Well, I can also support it. Up and down the street, there are similar situated front stairways, and having one that leads directly without having that rectangular access makes it much easier. The landing may be a little bit large. Could have been smaller, but I can support this. Can we take a vote?
Mr. Sermon.
Yes. Excuse me, yes.
Mr. Pelletan.
Yes.
Mr. Coling.
Yes.
Ms. Norick.
Yes.
Ms. Chalk Urban.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider.
Yes. So this is a unanimous recommendation, and if you please could come up and sign, one of you can come up and sign this. This will be heard at the next board meeting. I assume they will not discuss it. It may go with the consent agenda, but you may want to attend anyway.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2019Z40.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Can we hear the next case, please?
Our next case is 2019 C19, 624 Elmwood Avenue. This is a request for a 396.42-square-foot total floor area variation and a 10.78-foot rear yard stair setback variation to permit the construction of an exterior stairway.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello, good evening. I'm Dina Behr Maher, and I live at 624 Elmwood. Many of you have heard this before, so I'll keep it as brief as possible. Then for those of you who haven't, if you have any questions, please let me know. So we are kindly asking for a variance to build a staircase to an existing over-garage deck. We've been using this deck for years. It is part of our property, part of our backyard, part of our deck area, but unfortunately, we've been accessing it through a bedroom window from my daughter's property, and therein lies our hardship. It's not a safe way to access part of the property that is really our usable backyard because of this strange truncated backyard. We go out a window onto a little area and then have to jump down onto the existing deck there from a flat area. The stairs, as you can see from the plan, would go from our existing deck adjacent to our garage. So essentially, what we're asking for is a variance about as big as this podium here. And the last time we were here before the zoning board, I know Chairman, you had said it was a de minimis request, and we got a lot of support for it. The current chairman, the then-chairman, said that, as he stood there, he was concerned that perhaps our neighbors would not agree, and it was my fault. I did not have letters. I didn't realize we had to bring letters at the time. I explained to them that I had spoken to all of the neighbors and that the neighbors were in support, but without the actual proof, it was hard to prove. So we now have letters in support from our neighbors. In fact, one of the neighbors adjacent to us, his son just kicked a ball up on our garage roof deck a couple of weeks ago, and he said, if you had those stairs, we would be able to go up and get the ball. Instead, we had to knock on your door and have your daughter climb out the window to try to get them. So I'm hoping by taking away the original concern about the neighbors' objections that we will be able to get your full support tonight and approval. And one other thing my daughter said, you know, please let them know that it would be a great fire escape as well, my little nervous Nellie daughter. So there you have it.
So what has changed from the last time you were here, at which time you got a negative recommendation?
We-
It went to the Board of Trustees.
We went to the Board of Trustees, correct.
Who then suggested that it come back to the zoning board because there was some new, there was new information that you could provide us, and what is that new information?
The new information is the letters from the neighbors, which we did not have before. So because we did not get the supermajority, when we were before the zoning board the first time, you may recall, we didn't have enough members here, so we needed a supermajority in order to move on to the full board, but we were given the option to go before the full board. When we went before the full board then, we would have needed a supermajority because we did not get the supermajority from the zoning board, and at that time, we got a majority of votes, but there were two people who did not vote for us. So the chairman, who believed in our cause and talked, tried to talk them into saying, look, it's really not much of a big deal, said, here's a way that I think that we should do this. You should go back before the zoning board. You should show them the new information, which are the letters, and the letters were the one thing that was missing when we went before the zoning board the first time, which is part of the reason why the chairman couldn't vote in our favor at that time.
Okay, I guess I have a quick question. I only see one letter in here.
Do we have all?
No, there are several.
I don't even have a full packet.
2.9, 2.10, 2.11. Okay, I just have.
I'll put this up there.
It goes from the-
So if you look at all the adjacent properties, we have, we should have letters from all of them.
I only have 2.14. I think it's earlier. There's a, then a section of meeting minutes? Oh, okay. Oh, I thought they'd all be back here.
There's three of them, I think.
Oh, that one. Okay.
And then, Lisa, how do I get this to work so I can?
This way.
Okay, now I see they're just kind of randomly in the packet.
I think because they came at different times. We started this process, I think we first applied in April, and then there weren't enough people at one board meeting, there weren't enough people at the next, then we decided to try our hand, and so on and so forth. So we, it's now November. So the letters came in at various times.
Lisa, I just have a quick question. I wasn't at that other meeting. I was absent from that. They're asking for, just so I understand it, 396 square feet. That's because the house is already over?
Right.
Because the request should only be about 40 square feet.
Right, right. They were granted a variation for floor area in 2012 that included the garage.
We had no garage. When we originally bought the house, we had no garage at all, and I got at the house, tried to keep it in the way that Wilmete would love and still have the old-looking home on the outside, and redid it, and then built a garage. At the time, our neighbor, who actually has since moved, didn't like where we were placing the garage, and we ended up having to move it, but that was part of the reason for the greater space, was that he thought it would prevent his south winds and so-
You created the-
I created the space, and we built-
The garage and the deck above.
Yes, and it's built with load-bearing-
And you went for a variation at that point.
Yes.
So now you're asking for a second variance.
We're asking to be able to access it now.
Yeah.
It was a, so without taking up too much of your time, when we moved the garage, the architect failed to put the stairs back in. I think it had to have been an oversight. I didn't come because he told me, we handle these things. I didn't know any better. I didn't come. And when the construction was finished, I said, well, how am I supposed to access my deck? He said, oh, yeah, you probably have to go back. And at the time, life was busy, and I didn't, and we started accessing it, and then I realized this is not a great way to access it, so now we're back.
When was that?
So that was 2012.
Oh, okay.
So essentially, it's 26 square feet, isn't it? The amount of the extra space that we're asking for is 26 square feet.
Okay, all right. Is Dina explained, so I understand now.
And we wanted to do it the right way. We wanted to come here and ask permission as opposed to, you know, doing it and then coming back later and saying, oh, you know, we did it. Can we have the permission afterwards?
So the incremental increase to the variation is 26 square feet?
So that's not even 1%.
Right, the part that's being added is 25.16 square feet.
It's basically the landing on the stair, right?
Yes, I have the picture here, but we can't seem to get this to work.
I think what we have-
But yes, it's just this, it's just this landing space and I think the top two stairs because that's above a certain-
Yeah, we have those photographs.
Oh, okay. Not the stairs below.
No.
No.
Just six foot nine or over six foot nine.
It's just, it's really like this podium, essentially.
All right. Other questions or comments for the applicant? Hearing none, you can have a seat, and we'll see if anybody wants to comment on this application. If, hearing none, we'll close the testimony and have a motion.
I'll move to recommend granting a request for a 396.42-square-foot or 4.72% total floor area variation and a 10.78-foot rear yard stair setback variation to permit the construction of an exterior stairway at 624 Elmwood Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Second. Mr. Pelletan.
Well, I think that Ms. Maher made the case quite clearly. You know, this is, it really is a de minimis request, and I actually know two of her neighbors and have talked to them about it to, you know, see what their feelings were about it, just to confirm everything that was said, and I, nobody has any issue with it, and because it is such a small area, I don't have any issue with it either. It's an odd-shaped lot, but as this board well knows, we got a lot of those in this town.
Ms. Village President.
Yeah, I made the motion last time. Case was up and was in favor, you know, based on the small nature of the request, and so I can support it again.
Yeah, I too can support it. I supported it last time. Appreciate getting the letters that verify what you said last time and can continue to support it.
I can support it as well.
Likewise.
I can also, I mapped all the letters around the property from the other property owners, and everyone are in support, and the issues are, we've all talked about the shape of the property and the use of that deck without having to climb through the window, and it's a very small ask, and so I can also support it. Please call for a vote.
Mr. Pelletan.
Yes.
Mr. Coling.
Yes.
Ms. Norick.
Yes.
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Ms. Chalk Urban.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider.
Yes. So unanimous recommendation to the Board of Trustees, and if you could come up and sign the, you may want to attend. Yes, please, come up. It's on December 10th, I believe.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2019Z19.
Second. On the favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck.
Hopefully, you'll be on the consent agenda.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have the next case, please.
Our next case is 2019 Z35, oh, 2019 Z35, 1 Indian Hill Road. We do have revised, slightly revised plans and a slightly revised request. The request is for a variation to permit the expansion of legal non-conforming uses, a club and a golf course, a 25-foot south side yard adjoining a street setback variation, a 16.5-foot rear yard of a double frontage lot setback variation, a 16.5-foot rear yard of a double frontage lot setback variation, a 16.5-foot rear yard of a double frontage lot variation, a 25-foot north side yard adjoining a street setback variation, a 41.37-foot north side yard adjoining a street setback variation, a 9-foot accessory structure height variation, a 2.75-foot accessory structure height variation, a special use for three accessory buildings each in excess of 200 square feet, a variation for more than three accessory buildings on a lot, a 2,614.35-square-foot south side yard adjoining a street impervious surface coverage variation, a 3,130.68-square-foot north side yard adjoining a street impervious surface coverage variation, a 7.5-foot rear yard of a double frontage lot air conditioner setback variation, a 2-foot fence height variation, and a fence openness variation to permit the construction of a one-story employee center, a one-story equipment wash building, parking lot, and other site improvements.
That was a mouthful.
Wow, that sounds exhausting. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is John Talte. I'm with OKW Architects, 600 West Jackson Boulevard, Chicago, Illinois. I am the architect for the project that's here before you tonight. Full disclosure, I'm also a member of Indian Hill Club, and with me tonight is our general manager, Jeff Belting, our site superintendent, Dave Schlaggader, and our club president, Doug Mayby. So we're well-attended, and we hope to provide some clarity and a little bit of simplicity to what is otherwise seemingly a complex ask. Lisa, is, can I get on the screen the-
I'm not exactly sure.
Information?
We're hoping so.
We're working on it. So let me begin, excuse me, with just a few comments about this property. You folks are all familiar with it. I'm sure you've all visited the property. It's approximately 2 acres, and we're getting closer, and it's a non-conforming use-
By the way, speaking of whatever you have on your-
I know, but I was thinking that we're gonna, we have it in the-
We're queued up for a PowerPoint presentation.
A PowerPoint, yeah. I'm sorry for that. We're a non-conforming use in a residential neighborhood today. The existing maintenance building, which is part of the Indian Hill campus which sits on the site today, is a, is a structure that dates back 50-plus years and is not a, is not a structure that can be improved upon. It can't be added to or heightened or appended to. It was a pre-engineered building that has lived a wonderful life, but any improvements to the site really are requiring us to look at new structures in order for those things to occur. Turf Science, as part of the stewardship of a golf course of 110-plus acres, has evolved to- has evolved a great deal through the years. And so the simple needs of a property and the care and love of a property is requiring some different things today than it did forty, fifty years ago, certainly. Aside from the new structures that we're proposing on this site, I think it's important to reinforce the notion that there is no stormwater management on this two-acre parcel today as it sits. Whatever happens, whatever storm weather events we have, it is... Water goes where water wants to go. As part of our improvement program on this parcel, we are imposing a stormwater management plan. We are going to engineer the site to meet and exceed the Village of Will Matt's requirements. And in doing so, we're gonna make not only the site perform better, but the neighborhood immediately surrounding the property perform in a better way. We want to reinforce that there's no... By improving the site in the way we are anticipating, there is no additional occupancy or intensity of use from how it functions today. There are no more employees gonna show up at any given morning. It's simply a redistribution of the existing employee count, which, if memory serves me correct, is twenty-two people for about nine months of the year. The club is... Has always prided itself in being a good neighbor. We communicate well, we think, with the people that are surrounding the properties, and we want to continue to do so. So we approach all this in the spirit of being that good neighbor and hope that the efforts that we are taking in improving this property are appropriate. So I assume that's not gonna happen?
Yeah, we might kind of plan for that.
So we go to Plan B. I have a hard copy.
And the board members did receive a copy of the presentation?
Let's see how best to do this. So this gives us a basic understanding of the property that we're discussing. The building that sits at the bottom of the screen here is our existing maintenance building. And I spoke of the fact that it really is not being considered for improvement. When some of the functions move out of it into the new accessory buildings that are proposed, there will be a little bit more breadth inside for equipment to kind of have wider berths. But functionally, it's not going to change in any way, shape, or form. What we're proposing is a new single-story employee center here, currently at the south end of the maintenance building. Therein lies all the office space and the employee gathering spaces for the club. And what we're hopeful to do is move them out into a much more appropriate building that houses showers, offices, a lunchroom, things like that for their use. Indian Hill Club and the maintenance facility is no different than really any employee in today's world. We need to provide the best possible care for those who take care of us. And so that is a primary driver for the want to do this. We want to create a better environment for the people who work so hard on our behalf at the club. And we think that we're doing just that in this new employee center. Aside from that building, the other new accessory structure is this equipment building, which sits on the northern half of the site. Another single-story building that will accommodate equipment washing facilities, which does not occur on-site today in the most environmentally sound way. So what we're doing and what this building will allow us to do is to bring equipment after it's mowed lawns, spread fertilizer and the like, wash it appropriately within the context of that building, drain and capture that water that comes off of those... That comes off of that equipment, gather it in a safe way in a triple basin beneath the structure, and dispose of it appropriately rather than have grass clippings and the like just go into the storm sewer. So that is one of the drivers of that building, of that equipment building. Adjacent to that, to the west, is pesticide storage, where we're isolating pesticides within its own compartment within that building. And then finally, to the west, is sand storage. In a previous iteration of this submittal, we had a silo that was proposed on this site, a sand silo, that was quite large and tall. We listened to what the ARC had to say about that. We listened to what neighbors had to say about that and decided against the incorporation of that amenity in the site and instead are expanding this pre-engineered building to accommodate for the storage of sand. It seems like a simple thing, but it creates a tremendous amount of dust. And when it's all being housed within the context of the existing maintenance building, it gathers a lot of dust. It's not a real healthy environment for staff. And so by isolating that particular material, it will make things cleaner and better for all people involved. Other things that are impacting the setbacks and the height requirements that we're speaking of tonight, there's a pad immediately to the west, which is gonna be... It's a concrete pad, which is going to house two thirty-yard dumpsters that are currently on-site now. They just simply sit on earth. So we're trying to provide a rational home for them to rest on so that we can clean the site in a more appropriate way and find a more permanent space for the dumpsters. As I talk about the site globally, I think it's important to note, too, if for those of you who've been out there, it's a little bit haphazard. It's... There's really no rhyme or reason to anything. It's just, over time, we've developed habits as to how we get in and out, how we circulate around. And one of the primary goals of this process was to provide order to what is, right now, very disorderly, safe. And it's ours, and we love it. And... But it could be better. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish here. Not only build the facility in a more modern way and account for both employees and equipment and the storage of materials, but also do it in such a way that both pedestrian and vehicular traffic is better defined, that people can navigate the site in a more appropriate and safe manner. And in doing so, engineer the site in such a way that stormwater management is considered and is cared for as part of the overall solution. The setbacks are an issue, have been...
Before we go to setbacks, what is going to be in the storage bin?
Okay, so the storage bin, just to clarify, these seven bins here, they're simply painted CMU bays that are probably four feet high, that is going to... We're just simply partitioning topsoil, other types of sand. Dave, help me out over there. What might...
Mulch, gravel.
Mulch, gravel, all the things that are part and parcel with the operations of the golf course. But we want to do it in a... Right now, they're just simply sitting in piles on-site. And we want to, again, kind of provide a dedicated environment for each of those things. One, so they don't kind of spill into one another and contaminate one another. But more importantly, just they can be accessed easier, they're visually more appealing, and it just promotes a little bit more rigorous understanding of how the site works.
What is a gravel surface storage pad? What is that for?
The... So that is for... What's being referenced is this piece right behind the equipment building is simply just to put equipment. There's lots of equipment that is part of this operation. And we just felt as though if we dedicated a portion of the site with a gravel surface, we could house... We could park tractors, things like that, on there in an appropriate way and not really have them get in the way of the other operations or be a nuisance to anyone on-site. The same holds true with this loading area... Excuse me, I got too close. With this loading area to the north of the existing maintenance building. Again, right now, we're parking trailers. We're doing things all over the place, but very little of it has any rhyme or reason. And so, again, in an effort to impose order and control over things, we felt it best to be able to provide a dedicated space for the overnight storage of a flatbed trailer or a piece of equipment that might otherwise be sitting in the middle of the site somewhere. So it's just... It's no different than how I tackle my basement, you know, kind of in the spring and fall. It's like, okay, everything's gotta get back to where it needs to go. As well as the dedicated parking that we're providing at the employee center. Right now, cars are just parked wherever it's dry, wherever it's level, and wherever it's seemingly out of the way of other traffic. We're providing a dedicated parking lot with a handicap stall, per code, for the employees and visitors and others so that when they get there, when they arrive early, early in the morning before sunrise, there's a place for them to house their cars, proximate to where they have to begin their day in the employee center.
The ninety-two-foot, three-inch distance between the back end of the storage bins and the front of the equipment wall of the building, is that ninety-two feet? Was that determined based on some turning radius required for the equipment?
No, sir. It was... Well, it's based on... It has no specificity.
I'm gonna point it out.
Yes, I'm sorry. The dimension that's being referenced is this ninety-two feet, three inches. It was simply kind of... There's no specificity to the number, but it's important that there is enough real estate in the middle of the site to allow for traffic and equipment to circulate around that area. We really worked outside-in, and that was the remainder. Taking a little bit of a step back, when we began this journey for this project, we recognized quickly that this was an unusual piece of property. It's, again, about two acres, and it's unique in Will Matt in that it has a street frontage on all four sides. So we kind of scratched our heads and said, "Okay, where's the front yard in all this? How does this want to work? How do we address setbacks?" And so thankfully, we met with staff on more than one occasion and said, "Could you help us provide some clarity to this? Because we want to do this right. We don't want to come in and just say, 'Hey, here's what's happening,'" and, you know, like it or lump it. It was really a team effort. And we're very thankful and appreciative of your staff in helping us get to where we are today. So we started to locate where these buildings needed to go. Currently, the property extends to the center line of Kennelworth Avenue, the center lines of Indian Hill Road, the center line of Hunter. So as part of the dialogue, the village was asking us, "Okay, well, you understand that as sites get improved in this part of town, we're gonna be asking for you to give us that property back." Because as Kennelworth Avenue has been improved through the years, the property lines do not, in fact, extend to the center line of the road. They extend to the edge of the right-of-way. And so...
That's true for everywhere in the village, isn't it?
Correct, correct. And so as we began the process of setbacks, we were looking at setbacks from the center line of Kennelworth Avenue as being fifty feet because it's our property. We pay taxes on it.
This is the first time I've ever heard that argument in terms of setbacks. Have we had other examples that you measure the setback from the center line of the street?
It's been our interpretation to measure from where the edge of the right-of-way would be, which is what we've done on Indian Hill Road, but also like on Lake Avenue, where some parcels sometimes jut out into the street.
So it's the edge of the...
It's the edge of the... Where the right-of-way would be if it were dedicated.
Which is the edge of the street in a simple interpretation, right?
No, the curb is not commensurate with the right-of-way. In fact, the right-of-way is right here. And the center line, obviously, of Kennelworth Avenue is here. The curb lies in between. The right-of-way on Kennelworth Avenue is sixty-six feet. And so from the center line of Kennelworth Avenue to what would be the new property line moving forward would be a thirty-three-foot differential. So right now, we're fifty-eight feet from the center line. We're proposing the employee center to be fifty-eight feet from the center line of Kennelworth Avenue or twenty-five feet from the edge of the property, as it will be reconsidered.
Are you saying the fence, the existing fence, is the edge of the right-of-way? Is that what you're saying?
It's approximate. Yes, it sits on the edge of the right-of-way.
So you'll be dedicating thirty-three feet of that right-of-way to the village?
Correct, correct.
Could you help me understand why the employee... The one-story employee center is twenty-four feet high?
It's a good question. So when we approached it, we wanted the building to have a residential character to it. It could be a flat-roofed building. It absolutely could. The decision that we made was to make it... We want this to be a welcoming environment for not only the people who work there, but for people who visit there. We also recognize the fact that we sit within a residential neighborhood. And so the palette, the materiality, and the roof form that we propose is that of a residence rather than a utility building, an institutional building. So in lieu of a flat-roofed structure, we were proposing a pitched-roof asphalt shingled structure that is, I believe, without looking at my notes, twenty-four feet high, a foot taller than the existing maintenance building is today. And so in keeping with that thought of how we approach the architecture of these buildings, the equipment wash, pesticide storage, and sand storage building, as I said before, is a pre-engineered building. But we want to skin the building, essentially, with the same horizontal siding that we're proposing for the employee center. So that we're trying to create this... We want it to be consistent with kind of the Indian Hill vernacular, both from a color palette and from a materiality standpoint. We don't want this to be kind of a destination off in right field that no one wants to kind of be a part of. We want to embrace this and bring attention to it because it's a... We think it's a very positive amenity for the club environment. And so we want these buildings... We want the buildings to be... We want to be proud of the buildings that we put in there. And we want to treat them as best we can, given their purpose for the club operations.
One other question, which is, you have a fifty-foot setback from the Indian Hill roadside. I think that's the north, right?
Fifty-foot here, and then there's a...
Fifty-foot to the edge of the equipment wash building. And then on the south side, you have a twenty-five-foot proposed setback. And then on the south side, you have a twenty-five-foot proposed setback to the employee center. What is it that caused you to, to cite it closer to Kennelworth Avenue rather than closer to Indian Hill Road? Because you, it would be fairly easy to shift the whole thing.
So you're saying, why is this building here? Why is this building not sitting back? And we're sliding everything further to the north. Part of it had to do with some preliminary stormwater management ideas that we had of having some open space commensurate with the adjacent open spaces of the golf course, so that we could kind of gather some water in areas that were similar to one another. It also had to do with the notion of the need for storage of equipment, large equipment, mowers and the like. And we felt that belonged, I would rather, I'd feel more comfortable storing that stuff proximate to Indian Hill Road and the golf course than Kennelworth Avenue to the south.
In looking at it, where you have the text saying new concrete pad for dumpsters, if you shifted all of the structures twenty-five feet to the north, you could put the, your gravel pad right there, it would seem to me. But that would be shifting your setback issues from one side of the property to the other. I just wanted to know what, what it was that went into the equation of, you know, having the twenty-five-foot setback on one edge and not on the other side.
Understood.
I, I, can you clarify, Lisa, just a technical question? When we, just as an example, the case we heard on Prairie Avenue, which shows the property lines, right, that are, it doesn't indicate that, that, that the property line goes to the middle of Prairie Avenue?
Correct.
Right of way. What is the difference between this and this?
If you look at the, maybe the platte survey, the, the property actually shows that parcel three is the north half of Kennelworth Avenue.
When we asked you the question, the, the, the houses to the south of Kennelworth Avenue across the way from, what, what is, do they have a right-of-way to the center of Kennelworth Avenue? I mean, is their property go to the center of Kennelworth Avenue?
To my knowledge, it does not.
And, well, just explain to me why, why the difference?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I think it's probably a historical holdover from when the, the area was originally platted.
Really? Yeah, I think, I can explain that, I think, a little bit. So the, you're exactly right, the homes on the other side of Kennelworth Avenue are to the right-of-way, not to the center line. There have been no improvements to this site for a long, long time. And as a result, it is a holdover, the property line goes to, the current property that the village, that the, the club pays taxes on goes to the center line of Kennelworth Avenue.
So this is an anomaly?
It is an anomaly, yeah. And so that's kind of, and, and so that's the conundrum about the setbacks. It also includes Indian Hill Road on both sides and Hunter. So it, it is the property of the club today, and, but it was our understanding with staff that as properties were improved, there was this kind of clawback notion that the village had and said, okay, we'll work with you on this, but understand that, that that now is going to become our property, speaking as the village of Womet. It's going to be no longer Indian Hill Club, Indian Hill Club's property. We said, okay, we understand how that works.
Are you saying...
From the right-of-way?
From the right-of-way, yes, so...
Through the street. So who maintains the parkway, then?
We have always maintained it, and I think we'll continue to maintain it. We'll happily maintain. We've planted all the landscape that you see around the perimeter, we'll get into that in a second, all the landscape around the perimeter, we've, we've planted and we care for, and we will continue to do so. That includes the Indian Hill Road sides as well, so...
Are you saying that until now, that you have made an agreement not to mess with the right-of-way, that you would have closed off half of Kennelworth Avenue?
Oh, no, 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 we can't do that.
It was a right-of-way dedicated, dedicated right-of-way?
There's a dedicated right-of-way on our, on Indian Hill's property. It's a, it's a very unusual circumstance, and I, I would doubt there's probably any other site like this in the village anymore.
We used to have a number of alleys that were not utilized as alleys, that there were rights of way, and, and we vacated a number of those, and, and, but anyway, that's neither here nor there.
So the, the main change would be the, a reduction in your buildable area and a reduction in your property taxes after the, the area is deeded back to the village, if I understand correctly?
Yes.
Although it's, it's right-of-way, so they could not possibly have built on it.
We couldn't have, yeah, we couldn't have built that. The other thing that comes into play is...
Into their calculation.
Is a little bit of the impervious surface calcs.
As they've never calculated that.
The impervious surface calculations to currently take into account the right-of-way and, and, but in a, in a new world order, they're not going to include that right, that, you know, we're not gonna, we're not going to benefit from this right-of-way here in terms of the open space. So it...
That half of Kennelworth Avenue is calculated in the impervious surface calculation? No, the, the green space.
The green space. That's in the, the, the portion of the right-of-way right here...
Between the curb and the fence.
Between the fence and the back of curb. Right now, we're benefiting in, in theory, in terms of that being pervious surface.
Got it, thank you.
And that's no longer going to be pervious surface, because it's no longer going to be ours. So that's hence the variations that we're considering, or asking for in terms of the impervious surface calc. You saw that graphic that's included in your package, it's very complicated, and you're probably thinking, what, what does this all mean?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
You, you said earlier that the seventy-two feet in this paved area in the center is what was left over.
Seventy-two, it's ninety-two.
Ninety-two feet, yeah.
Well, it, it's ninety-two to the edge of the back, it's seventy-two in terms of maneuvering of vehicle around.
Gotcha, gotcha. Yes.
Did you examine, I, I'm struck by the fact that there is a lot of new construction being proposed here, and that so much of it does not conform to the code. And so one question I have is, as you looked at alternatives, you said you started from the edge and moved in.
Yes.
Did you think about tightening up the center a little bit, so that the employee center, for example, would fall within the setbacks?
And we, we absolutely did. And, and again, we started at kind of the north property and the south property, worked our way in, that's the remainder. The remainder, though, we're, we're sensitive to, because in, in looking at how that site might operate, for instance, we could have, we could have equipment coming in and out of the equipment wash. So equipment comes in this overhead door here, and it comes out that overhead door when it's clean. So that's, that's an operation unto itself. There, there could be pickups of the dumpsters that sit on the site at some point in time while this is happening. There are certainly going to be some of Dave's staff working in all of those bins at any given point in time, taking stuff to the golf course, whether it be gravel, mulch, sand, whatever. And we also are relocating an existing fuel pump that sits on the site right there. So there is going to be the fueling of tractors, trucks at any given point in time. So part of, and, and right now, if you were to be witness to the chaos that is the site on an active morning, or any time during the summer months especially, this, there, there are things, there are vehicles and people everywhere, all the time. And what we're trying to do is say, we, we want to focus pedestrian movement and automobiles that are going to be stationed all day on this portion of the site, that's a static portion. This is a very active portion, because it relates back to the golf course. And we want to make sure that the open space that we have, right now, the whole site is basically open, and it's just, it's just, you know, chaotic.
I, I will grant that you're improving the site. It's not a very pretty site.
No, it's not.
S-I-G-H-T at the moment, so...
So, so the...
But, but I, I also think that there are, you're, you're making requests that don't necessarily have to be, and I'm probing for that.
I, I completely understand where you're, where you're coming from. So what we tried to do was we tried to create a center, let's call it a quadrangle, and in looking at this the way we would look at some academic planning exercise, this, this open quad in the middle where all this activity, this vehicular activity takes place, and protect the perimeter as much as we can to allow it to be green space, open space, landscape improved, and a buffer to neighbors to the north, to the west, to the south, to the east, we have our existing building.
Follow-up with Mr. Pelletin's comment, there are no neighbors to the north for a long way, and so, but there are neighbors to the south.
Correct.
East and west. Why couldn't you move the whole design twenty-five feet to the north?
Every, so, starting here...
Yes.
And ending here, sliding everything twenty-five feet to the north.
Yes.
I don't, what if the parking lot stayed where it is? Because what we're trying to do is we're trying to get the car, we're trying to, I, I don't, I don't want to bring this parking back, because it's going to, it's going to create more intensity of use in less space. But if the building and, and these amenities right here, if this all slid twenty-five feet, giving us more of a buffer on Kennelworth Avenue, I'm assuming this is where you're going with all of this? I don't, I'd have to ask, but I, I, we could, we could look at that certainly.
My thought about it was that nobody lives on the thirteenth hole.
Correct.
And there are neighbors on the other side of Kennelworth.
Correct. Yeah, and, and again, it was not about trying to protect, because you can't see anything, the thirteenth hole is, is a par three that has a giant berm around it. So when you're, if, if you've driven down Indian Hill Road, you kind of, you ride around the corner of that, of that berm. So it's, it was not the intention of saying, oh, we want to be respectful of the golf course to the north. In fact, what we were trying to do was allow for that pesticide building and the, and the storage of equipment to sit on the north side, more proximate to the golf course. And, and if there's anything on the site that has a positive impact, that we felt it's the employee center, and we wanted to get that in line with and in keeping with the residential character of Kennelworth Avenue.
Lisa, is there any, what is the setback for the parking lot? I mean, we have the building setback, but I'm not familiar with what, parking lot.
Five, five feet for non-residential uses.
Okay, so then there would be no reason...
So the parking lot is, is okay.
Lisa, do we, do we have any setback requirements for dumpsters and/or, I guess I'm surprised that dumpsters can be on a site permanently? Does the village have any regulations about that?
You mean garbage dumpsters?
Yeah, two thirty-yard dumpsters, yes.
They are, they're dumpsters, and it's not garbage the way it's garbage at, you know, Portillo's garbage, it's really debris. It's, 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 you know, tree limbs from the golf course, it's things like that that have to be, that are brought on-site and then discarded.
How do the dumpsters enter and exit? I assume you have trucks come and pick them up?
Yes.
And do they go through Indian Hill Road, or...
They come down, everything is off of Indian Hill Road, nothing is off of Kennelworth Avenue. That's an emergency access point only. And so that is, that's sacre sancti. So every, all the vehicular traffic, all the pedestrian traffic comes off of this point on Indian Hill Road.
I think the, the existing brick patio, which is, I guess, attached to the existing maintenance building, what's the function for that?
That patio, that, so at that end of the building, we're, we're just choosing not to touch it, but at that end of the building is where the offices currently exist and where the, where staff resides, for lack of a better term. So it's a place for them to go outside and sit and have their lunch or breakfast, and it's just got a, it's got a picnic table on it and things like that.
As I look at the revised plans that you've given us, it looks like the dumpsters are being pushed closer to Indian Hill Road than they were in the original plans that we received.
The pad is being slid by, slid to the west. The purpose of, the reason being is because where the sand storage access point is, or where the extension of that building that includes sand storage, we did that, there used to be that silo sitting there. The silo could be accessed by trucks, you know, backing up underneath it, pulling the chute, filling the truck and taking it off, taking off. Now we need an overhead door, we need a dedicated overhead door to access that. And so as, by extending the building, removing the sand silo, we simply needed to, to push the, the dumpsters back into the, into the north, or I'm sorry, into the west setback a bit more than they were before.
Are there any other changes to the plan that have not been brought to our attention?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
I'd like to say, I think, I think we're getting off track here. I think we're focusing too much on what, what the pieces are within it. If somebody wants to build a house in Womet, and they want to make their first floor all kitchen, they can do whatever they want. You know, I think we're, we're now challenging, being an architect, now we're challenging the architect on circulation within the space.
Yes.
Architects can figure out, a truck is this big, this is the circulation we need. So I don't think we should be focusing on that, I think we should be focusing on three items that impact the perimeter of the property, that impact the residents of Womet.
Uh-huh.
I think that's our role. So I guess, looking at one email we got today, it shows these cars and vans parked on an adjacent lot. And now I see that, you know, that must be out in front here.
That's right here.
So, so that may be something that impacts the adjacent neighbor in Womet.
Understood.
So I, I imagine that's a critical issue that we should be talking about. Your plan, then, is to not have cars there anymore?
Correct.
And have them there, so that's...
I, I think you bring up a really good point. So those photographs that you received today are addressing this corner piece of property, which is unincorporated Cook County. We've had a very unusual season in that, that piece of proper, that, that open space has been storaged to...
Gravel or soil and tractors.
Paddle, paddle tennis courts that are being built on-site.
That's like a stocking there?
It, it was, yeah. And, and, and also the, the parking of vehicles, which now we hope to house completely on-site here. I will say that that open space has also been home to neighbors who have events at their home, that don't have the parking necessary to accommodate said events. And they've approached the club and said, could we park, you know, we can fit twenty cars on there or something, could we park on there? Would you mind if we had someone do that? The club has said, absolutely, you go ahead and do that. And so that, that little piece of property, although it's, the intent is for it to remain just an open space and lawn, is, is sometimes used in, in, in certain events for, for parking, whether it be neighbors, whether it be club events that are profound, and there's no place to put cars anymore, a Christmas event, or, you know, Mother's Day brunch or something, and staff maybe parks there for a few hours. and staff maybe parks there for a few hours because there's no parking spaces left up on site at the clubhouse.
I guess we'll wait to hear from the neighbor, but I would, I would think a reasonable thing to do would be to have those vehicles parked with, you know, if they're being parked there, a certain setback, so it doesn't impact that adjacent neighbor.
Correct.
Okay. The second issue, I think, that impacts the site is the setback of the proposed one-story structure. And I guess the way I view that is, if you were to mirror the setback that was on Kennelworth Avenue on your property, where would that be, Lisa? Do you understand? So then, if you're driving down, if the, as you're driving down Kennelworth Avenue, you have the face of all the homes that are set back, whatever distance from the curb, I would think that that building could be set back the same distance. So you'd mirror the setback, so I'd like to know what that is. Because I think if you mirror the setback, then we don't, we don't have as much of an issue because it's only 20-
The setback is supposed to be 50.
It's a larger setback for-
But Bob, to your point, the 58, the 58 feet is, is a specific number based upon a staff conversation. So that is, that, that south line of the proposed maintenance facility, the, the employee center is in line with the properties moving down Kennelworth Avenue, because-
On the north side?
Yes.
So that aligns with-
It aligns, because, because it was the, and the 58 was, was a function of 50 feet, their original property lines all went to the center line of Kennelworth Avenue-
Okay.
Which was 50, so they were set back 50 feet. And then there's a 33 feet, there's a 33-foot right-of-way, and then they were set back, it was, it was a combination of 25 feet plus the 33-foot right-of-way. So it drove the 58 feet. So we were trying to align that with all the other properties on Kennelworth Avenue.
So I just wanted to confirm that with Lisa. So to be apples, I know the setback currently is based on the size of this property, but really the setback we should be looking at is the setback that aligns with the houses further to the west.
Remember that the houses on the north side of Kennelworth-
Down a few blocks.
Yeah, a few blocks down.
Two blocks down, okay.
But I'm just saying, or they should measure, or they should match, or mirror-
Yeah, but we don't want the houses that are further west. We're not asking them to-
Okay, not-
Have fences and, and buffering from the neighborhood.
Okay, well then, what I said first was, if you were to mirror the setback, whatever the setback is that they have-
Bob, Bob.
Let me finish my point. Whatever setback they have there, I feel a reasonable number would be to match that. I'm not saying that's what the zoning is, but it's-
Can I just insert here? What is, what is the zoning for the, the properties to the south of, is that R1?
South of, on the south side of Kennelworth is R1.
And the zoning for the, this property in question?
Is R.
And what is, what is the setback for an R zoning?
Minimum front yard setback is 40 feet.
Where's his, R1 is-
Minimum is 25.
Okay.
Okay, so they're matching an R1 right now?
No, no.
They're proposing to match on R1.
Right, the 20, the 25 feet, which is 25 plus 33 is the 58 foot. So that's what we were trying to do. So I, Bob, I completely understand what you're saying. Look at the context around. So as we look at, you know, these houses across the street on Kennelworth Avenue, let us be sympathetic with the relationship of that house to Kennelworth Avenue, as, as it is on the south, let's make it so on the north. And so, and, and so that's what we tried to do with the 58 feet. That was what, that's what drove that dimension.
Okay. And then the third question I have, and then I'll be finished for a little while, is what is your long-term plan for the existing maintenance building? You know, you said it's been there a while. I mean, are you going to come back for another-
No.
Variation for that in 10 years?
We need it, we need it, and we're going to keep it.
And maintain it. You put a new roof on when it needs it.
We're going to do whatever is necessary to maintain it in its current function.
So it won't become an eyesore for the neighbors. It'll be maintained.
No, 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 we don't want that. Because it plays a prominent role on the, on the west side of Hunter as you drive around there. We don't, we don't want, it's, it's going to continue to function. We need it to function, and we'll take proper care of the building, as we have.
Okay. And then just getting back to the setback, I guess what you have is what would be minimum, but since your lot is deeper, I can see that other committee members would want that larger. Because if you had a larger property in Wilmeth, you'd have, that setback is larger.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I leave that up to the committee to, to discuss.
Any other questions for the applicant? Now, did I hear you correctly, and we'll talk about it later, that you are subject to your client-
Yes.
Considering it, that you could raise the possibility of moving the employee center to the north?
Yes.
Any other?
We would move, we would move everything, because, because we need, we need to protect this, the zone for all the traffic that's going to fall in, in there.
And can you, is there a, a number that you are willing to consider?
Without, without putting pencil to paper, let's, let's try to accomplish 25 feet. And if 25 feet can work, we would do that.
You mean move it another 25, so you'd be 50 feet.
Take, take this building block, let's say that that's, that's one thing, and slide this over 25 feet.
Okay.
Which is fundamentally the center line of this building. It's a 50 by 50-foot building. So-
Leave the parking lot where it is.
And leave the parking lot where it is.
I, I do have one other question, different. When I was out there, the first go-around for this one, over the summer, I noticed that there were vehicles parked, and I know they won't be that way, but there were dump trucks parked with their backs up, weeds growing around them, everything else. I assume those trucks are going to be parked up in that area that you were talking about and not, is that something you can actually see from, if you're standing on the sidewalk across the street?
Correct.
You can see the bucket of the-
Correct.
Of the dump truck.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, you're not going to see it anymore because it's going to be so far removed from the south side of the property. It's going to be-
And that type of vehicle wouldn't be parked in the new staff parking lot?
No, 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 no. Not, not at all. Yeah, we want to, we, and that was the, going back to the, the previous comment. We wanted to move the less attractive aspects of the operations to the north half of the site rather than the south half of the site. That was the spirit of what we were trying to accomplish.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant? If not, you can take a seat-
Thank you.
And we'll see if anyone wants to speak about this project. I suspect some people will. Please come up and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Mike Thompson. My wife and I, I've been residents in Wilmeth for over 30 years. And we own the residential property at 2305 Kennelworth Avenue, directly across from the Indian Hill Maintenance Facility Expansion Site. I've got some, I guess I've, I have some strong concerns, but I appreciate your presentation today. It's a lot to ponder. There's a lot going on here, and I appreciate you guys giving due diligence and paying attention to this matter. I, I really submitted my concerns to the village in a letter, and while I appreciate the Indian Hill Country Club has modified somewhat from their original variation proposal, I still disagree with the expansiveness of the project. The overdevelopment of this residential zone property by the Indian Hill Country Club represents, I guess, a commercialization or even an industrialization, if you will, of a two-acre parcel which lies totally within the village limits as a residentially zoned property. The extent of this planned overdevelopment is totally out of character with the Wilmeth residential neighborhood. The expansion is proposed throughout the two-acre parcel seems imposing and affords the neighboring residential district minimal buffering from the anticipated daily operational maintenance activities at the site. In 1967, based on my research anyway, the country club first obtained the permit from the village for the construction of the small maintenance building that's been previously discussed. At that time, I'm sure the original project seemed minimal and reasonable, as the building footprint neatly tucked into the small corner of that section of the property, and would only take up some 10% of the two-acre parcel. The impact of the structure within the residentially zoned area was probably hardly noticeable at the time. The country club now wants to expand operations to cover most of the two-acre parcel with the construction of, of the new enclosed structures to serve as an equipment wash facility, PSSI, and sand containment. And additionally, the 2,600-square-foot employee center planned together with the installation of the fixed 2,200-square-foot, seven-unit material storage configuration. When you throw in that proposed, the proposed paved 4,800-square-foot, 14-space parking lot, and the 1,100-square-foot dumpster storage pad, a two, a two-pump fuel station, and all the attendant paved traffic surface areas, the site hardly resembles or is consistent with the zone residential area anymore. As far as variance requests goes for zone residential areas, this variance request seems rather extreme and not at all beneficial or enhancing to the surrounding Wilmeth properties, either aesthetically or from a property value perspective. It looks much more like a site with much less grain and much more concrete coverage, designed to introduce and facilitate increased work activity, provide for more vehicular traffic, and accommodate additional onsite employees. The country club maintains that expansion is necessary on the Wilmeth two-acre site to provide for the increased maintenance of the golf course. I guess that's understandable, but why should our Wilmeth neighborhood bear the full burden in meeting those needs? Maybe the supply needs of the golf course would be better served by expanding into their one-acre open area immediately to the north of the Wilmeth two-acre parcel. Instead, we spoke of that property already. They might even consider utilizing the one-acre vacant parcel at the west end of the golf course bordering Locust Road in Winnetka. Both parcels are in better proximity to the club's golf course than the more remote Wilmeth property. Aside from the full development of the two-acre Wilmeth site into an area more identified with a commercial industrial site and not at all consistent with a residential neighborhood, little has been afforded the surrounding residential properties in terms of a buffering and insulating the residents from the expansion and follow-on impact of increased maintenance facility activity. To the contrary, the country club is seeking significant relief from setback variation requirements, which are specifically designed to insulate residents from intrusive neighboring activity. Given the nature of the intended use of this two-acre parcel, the setback safeguards need to be more strictly adhered to and should not be relaxed under any circumstances. Some 14 years ago, the maintenance facility obtained a permit from the village for the construction, construction of new perimeter fencing. I guess at that point in time, the neighborhood residents had grown somewhat tired of the appearance of the maintenance building, and an accord was struck with the village involving improvement and ongoing maintenance of the property's perimeter. Over the years, it seems that the country club's interest in maintaining the perimeter with any high standard or consistency has waned, allowing both for the fencing and screening shrubbery to deteriorate and grow shabby in appearance, at least along Kennelworth Avenue and Hunter Road. With this proposal, the country club is now proposing to rededicate the perimeter areas back to the village. I hope the village is in a position to maintain this, these perimeter areas, perimeter areas after this has been given back to the village. Finally, I think the village needs to think long and hard before accommodating the country club with this overdevelopment. If the property is now to become, in effect, a non-residential zone property, there must be some hard and fast understanding between the village and the country club as to the full extent of the maintenance operations and the ongoing upkeep expectations at the facility. Even to the casual observer, the country club has chosen to use this residential property in almost a casual way since the construction of the original structure in 1967. The country club should be expected to maintain and use these grounds in a much, in much the same manner as any other owner or occupant of a zoned residential property. And considering this matter in its present format, I fear that the cart is being put before the horse. Allowing this property to be overdeveloped in such a way that is out of character with the surrounding neighborhood would, would be negligent without first having an understanding and firm expectation as to the extent of the operation, operational activity at the proposed expanded facility. It would be just as neglectful to allow the project to proceed without taking the necessary steps to ensure that the residents' concerns and interests come first. Maintaining a true residential character in this area should be the village's first and foremost concern. The configuration, the expansiveness of the current project proposal does nothing to enhance our Wilmeth neighborhood. The village already derives little benefit of the tax revenues generated by this two-acre parcel, and now Wilmeth neighborhood stands to be negatively encumbered by a character-changing, commercialization, industrialization of this property. I respectfully request that the zoning board of appeals deny this variation, at least in its present format. That being said, a lot was mentioned, and I, I think, I would like to reinforce the fact of, the fact that the, the building that's being proposed for the employee center is not a residence and should not be considered as such, and should be subject to the setbacks as required under the code. And I think this should also apply to the parking lot as well, with the provisions, and I, and I guess this is a, is a, is a better presentation than should be before the, before the appearance review board with respect to the buffering that should be undertaken along Kennelworth and Hunter Road. So I've reserved my comments for that board at that point in time. I thank you for your attention. Any questions of me?
So, do daily operations impact you in any way today?
I guess just from a noise standpoint.
So, trucks, or, I mean, what?
Well, they, there's just day-to-day activity, expected activity. There's trucks moving around. Now we're moving the parking lot closer to Kennelworth Avenue, so I suspect there's going to be more vehicle traffic going in and out of that parking lot on a day-to-day basis, in and out, parking. I don't know what to expect. Nobody can project into the future. It's a new setup here. I don't know what kind of vehicles are going to go in there. It seems to me-
It's going to be just people, you know, coming to work.
If, if it's stipulated as such, you know, that's, that's definitely, I feel better about it, okay? But there's no, that was not included in the presentation by the, by the country club. So I, you know, I'm just a little bit concerned about what is not said, as opposed to what has been put on paper.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Someone else wants to come? Please, state your name and address.
Neighbor, new neighbor. I live at 2309 Kennelworth Avenue, so I'm part of the picture across the street. So I just wanted to make three main points. One is that I even, I think even just the lengthy listing of the ways they want to change the zoning rules for themselves is notable. You know, most of the agenda items are one sentence. This is half a page, so they really, because I agree with Mike. Like, I think that building it up is a big negative. So a lot of the argument was about how we're getting rid of the chaos, but actually it blends in relatively fine right now. The piles of sand, whatever, it's more natural looking right now. You've got a few cars that are sitting there, but to be- But to be honest, the biggest I saw is the existing maintenance building. I was a little bit concerned with the board notes about how people think the shrubbery right now is a good hiding of it. That's not the case at all. I'm not sure if being on the sidewalk, you don't see a lot, but from my first floor, everything that's there right now is very visible. There's only a few trees. So the idea that it's hidden from the adjacent properties is not, not accurate. And there's a lot of talk about bringing order to it. I see it as creating a structure that's sort of like a Home Depot. So you've got this Home Depot box store type facility across the street from your house and it's very orderly, but it doesn't might mean you want this big Home Depot like orderly structure across from your house. I think that right now it blends in. I also agree with what Mike said about the maintenance of the existing maintenance building right now. There's rust, different things my parents pointed out when they visited, so I think some of those are, are valid concerns. And then finally, I really am concerned about the water issue. They talked about the stormwater plans that they have. But right now, God gave that property a lot of land, like it's really just dirt and it's absorbing a lot of the water right now. And all that impervious surface, the water does have to go somewhere and maybe they're saying they're, they're going to take care of it, but my previous house, there's a tear down behind it and I'm sure they passed the zoning for whatever they needed to do for that tear down. But when they built it, it was higher than all the properties. All the water comes downhill. They're not going to tear down that tear down mansion behind my house, just like they're not going to redo this property once they've built it. Right now, the village is spending millions of dollars for water retention in Thorberg Park, just a couple of blocks away. This could totally make the problem worse after the village is already investing a lot of money trying to solve it. So I'm as concerned about the water damage as anything else. So I'm also asking you to reject their plan.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else want to comment, please? By the way, I just wanted to add regarding your water comment that the site plan review committee has made comments and this, whatever decision is made, if there is a, a decision made, would be subject to stormwater best management practices will be incorporated in the plans. And they will commit to that and will be reviewed and it has to be approved, but anyway, proceed. It's our concern also. The less paving, the better.
Hi there. We're Lloyd and Peggy Nelson, two-two-four-four Beechwood.
Good evening.
Corner of Beechwood and Hunter. We actually have a one-hundred-and-thirty-foot common locked line with the golf course. We're the folks down at the bottom of the picture, if you will. I don't know how that works.
Yeah, we live here.
And notwithstanding.
You're twenty.
Twenty-two forty-four Beechwood.
Twenty-two forty-four, okay.
So we're at the corner of Beechwood and Hunter.
I got it.
Driving north on Hunter.
We look, we're, I'm the guy that wrote the emails. And you, you saw the pictures and that's what our view looks like out our window, out our bedroom window.
I mean, well, when we moved in in nineteen ninety, the ugly green maintenance building was already there. So we figured it, it's pre-existing condition or something, I guess you could say. But we are concerned a little bit about some of these changes, although we talked with Dave Schlagert about it at length and he walked us around and we can see that perhaps it would be for the golf course, a lot of improvement from the chaos that they say they have now. For anyone, once you get to a second story, which most of the homes around there are second story, they can look in and see all of that. I would think that people on Kennelworth Avenue would, from the second story, their bedrooms would be able to look and see all of that. And that's our concern.
And that brings our number one issue.
That's our number one issue.
It's a personal issue, notwithstanding the wonderful points that these folks have made about the legal issues and how many, how many variations on top of variations on top of variations. Our particular issue is that northeast corner where they're proposing to put the new asphalt padding, paving for the equipment staging.
A twenty-by-fifty-foot asphalt paving to store unspecified equipment.
And that's what, if you look at the picture, that's what we'd be looking at every morning when we wake up. We'll be looking at that unspecified equipment.
Here we can show them what it looks like now. Show them.
Here's today, here's a picture today.
Put it on that, put it on this.
Look, look.
Okay, so this is our roof. This is the ugly maintenance white roof that they put on. And this is what we have now. It's a hedge and it will be replaced by fifty-by-twenty asphalt. And, and then they're going to store things there permanently and we don't know what's going to be there. And we think replacing hedge with asphalt is not a good exchange for us.
So I, I think you can see in my emails, I pretty much specified, you know, we don't know what's going there, but we certainly don't want to look at that every morning. And to the point that you guys made today about moving everything another twenty-five feet to the north, that also means that the long-range view that we will have every morning is of that.
Now all of this becomes our view.
Right.
If you do that.
Longer view. Now, I do want to say that Dave and, and the club have been very cooperative with us over the years. We've been here twenty-nine years. Dave's a great guy. When we bring issues to his, to his attention, he takes care of us usually and he's promised to put trees and vegetation and things like that in place. But there's nothing in the plan that specifically spells that out for us, nor are there details as to what kind of stuff will be there or why it has to be there in the first place. If they're clearing out a thousand, two thousand square feet of space in the existing building, why can't some of the stuff that's being stored outside, out back, as I call it, be moved inside to where this thousand or two thousand square feet that they're gaining in the existing building is? And a, a, attorney friend of mine also pointed out that as a residential area, are these types of vehicles supposed to be parked in the open in a residential area? Aren't they taller than ninety inches or whatever the specification is? Are they, are they even allowed in a residential area? I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV. But I do know that the problem for us is the view and the site and the fact that in trying to clean up the act, the act has become much, much larger. And that, that's the point that the other neighbors are making too. This is, there's hundreds of acres on this golf course. And I'm sorry if this is the only one that happens to fit into their purview, these two little acres now. But there's got to be another way to address this or address it with the, with the neighbors first. None of us that I know of were approached about these designs prior to getting the package a couple of weeks ago. So this is all new and Dave's been great. Dave's described it to us and we like hearing what Dave says. But Dave can't make a commitment from the entire club and we'd like to work it out on the personal level with the club and get then what they need or what they can settle for. It's just that it's a little tough for us. And then we also have a number of questions that aren't addressed specifically in their thing. I'll just rattle them off right now. Are the working hours going to change? Are they still the same? How many cars will be parked there? It looks like they only got spaces for fourteen, but they've got twenty-two employees. Number of people carpooling or what? How much equipment is physically going to be in there compared to what is there now? Aside from the additional space consumed, what about the other sensory characteristics, I call them? The beep, beep, beep of the noise from the backing up of cars and, and trucks, the smell? You know, there's, there are times of the year.
Sometimes they're fertilizing.
Yes, when the wind is coming. So those types of things, I don't think were addressed at all in the golf, in the golf course's proposal. It was just, here's what we want to do with the land. And like I said, we live with it every day. At five forty-five, we see the cars pulling into this, into the, the gate. We see all the people coming in. We hear all the, the stuff and they're very good about it and they're, they try to accommodate us. And, you know, we've been there twenty-nine years and we've learned to live with it, but that doesn't mean we want to make it worse. We want to get anything worse out of the deal. So that's our point of view. Any questions?
You mentioned five forty-five and I know that Mr. Thompson's message had said that the general hours of activity are from seven AM to five PM, so.
Those gates open at six AM every day.
Right. And how late does it go in your?
Three or four o'clock in the afternoon. I, I, Dave, you know, three, four o'clock in the afternoon.
Typically, our employees will arrive just before sunrise and will begin our work at sunrise and on a normal afternoon, we're done early afternoon, two thirty, three o'clock.
I mean, my view is that we knew all this when we purchased the house in nineteen ninety. And, and generally they're respectful neighbors and we want to be respectful to them too. But we're concerned about this asphalt pad that suddenly seems to be necessary, like they, they have, they have to have this fifty-foot moving of the fence. So that's fine. From Indian Hill Road, no one's going to see tho, that stored equipment, whatever they're putting, but we're looking down on it like this.
And it's right next to our patio also.
So, so it's a, a little bit.
Like I said, our lot line runs along and parallel to the, the maintenance building there. Sorry. Any other questions?
I, I would like to, what some of my, our neighbors have said, I, I, are things I haven't thought of, but I kind of agree with it, that sometimes we feel like, especially on Hunter, I don't, I, I don't see a lot of maintenance by the club going on on Hunter Boulevard on that parkway area. You know, you go to the front of Indian Hill Country Club, it is jaw-dropping beautiful landscape. You go to Hunter, that's, you know, the person who cleans up the garbage, moi. You know, I mean, we, you know, people throw stuff out or, or whatever and there's a lot of weeds that get to be waist-high. You know, it was a, a nice air effort to clean it up for the pictures before this presentation before the board, but it's, it's not always beautifully maintained over there on, on that. So that's just a, a complaint that's an aside.
And one more thing I'd like to add. Someone made the point about the parking of the cars on the parcel to the north when they have parties or whatever. And that's, that's not bad. We, we don't object to that. What we object to is not knowing in advance of that, that there's something happening and all of a sudden seeing valets running around and it's, it's a noisy operation. Generally, the people aren't parking the cars. It's somebody else that's getting paid to park the cars.
Yeah, but what would you say, once a year, twice a year?
Four or five times a year at most or something like that. Recently with the, with the paddle tennis, that was a big to-do and there's been some activity there parking-wise, but I think that's because they're, they don't have room to park there anymore. But we'd like to see that parcel returned to the way it used to be, which was just an open field, if it can.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else would like to speak?
I'd like to add a couple of comments. I always want to get comments from my husband's comments. As they're speaking about this.
Just take your name and address, please.
As they're speaking, I'm Debbie Thompson, twenty-three oh-five Kennelworth Avenue. Is there speaking about this area where parking is done generously by the club for some parties and things like that? Will this now move back into this parking lot, which is directly across the street from us at nighttime? And that leads me to another question that I have. Will there be lights in this parking lot, which very much will affect us being right across the street from there? And the idea of arriving before sunrise, that's nice, but we, and, and there's a place for them to park and whatever, but we still live across the street from there. So they're arriving before sunrise and if it's not weather like this or really hot in the summertime, we'd, we'd want to have our windows open. So what kind of noise level can we expect from something like this if this parking lot is literally, we're right across, we're right where that little X is over there. So I mean, this parking lot is right across the street from us if it sits where it is, as opposed to being moved back in again. It's again, a concern to have all of this impervious surface, this parking lot and all this water is draining and it's coming towards us and the drainage is already a bad situation as it is. We have a sump pump, but I hope that that's not going to be the only redeeming thing that we're going to have if we have water that's going to be coming off of this concrete that's now being put into this area. That is a huge concern for us with all of this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that wants to speak? Again, seeing no one. I will, the applicant cam, can, can you come and respond to some of the questions? Like lighting, like hours of operation.
Thank you. I think number one, we respect all the comments and, and are sensitive to everyone's circumstances. A couple of things to reinforce. One, the activity level of the site is not going to increase one iota from what it is today. There are no additional employees. There's no additional equipment. There's no additional traffic. It is, the way it operates today is the way it will operate in the future if given the opportunity to develop the site in this manner. So that, that we can attest to. We are simply trying to reorganize how the site functions.
Lighting.
There is no site lighting provided on here. There is going, there will be a sconce adjacent to the front door of the employee center. But beyond that, there is no, there is no site lighting like you might see in a, in a retail center or something like, there's nothing to that effect.
And the sconce is meant to light the, the sidewalk area?
It's really just to identify the front door when it's dark out. Shoulder seasons, early in the morning, all the rest of it, so people can safely get from the vehicle, from the parking lot to the front door of the employee center.
The hours of operation won't change from how it is present.
They will remain the same. So how it functions today is how it will function in the future. Here is, I think, everything on here, but here, here's our Kennelworth Avenue elevation. And I simply photo, we, we photoshopped a series of, of images that I'm guessing I'm probably standing right in your, right in front of your house. And so the gate that sits right here is the, is the emergency access. Again, no vehicular access there and, and no pedestrian access either. Here is the location of the, this is the employee center that, as, as proposed. The main, the maintenance building is sitting right there. The employee center is approximately right there. If the employee center were to move to the north, twenty-five feet or some dimension thereof, that would recede and would be less impactful certainly along Kennelworth Avenue. The, the landscape that sits along Kennelworth Avenue and that sits along Indian Hill Road and everywhere is, has been installed, provided for by the club itself. This was not a day that I picked up any garbage before. This was a crummy fall day, as we've had lots of. And I just went out and took images of both the, the top images of Indian Hill Road, the bend at the west side of the property, this being the environmental building that's going to sit back inside the site and then along Kennelworth Avenue. The, the evergreens there were planted purposefully so that they could provide three-hundred-and-sixty-five day, you know, days a year kind of opacity to the site itself from the neighbors across the street. We've tried to work with the neighbors, both kind of from a macro sense and individually to, to, to best offer them the protection that they would like to have relative to the site. The Indian Hill Road perimeter is a difficult one to landscape because there's very little buffer between the fence, which I think is about five, six years old maybe, the new fence. I don't know, time flies, but.
A little less.
Little less. Four, four years, we replaced that fence about four years ago. There's, there's not the opportunity to landscape this edge as much as there is on Kennelworth Avenue as an example, simply because of the, the limited space between the edge of pavement and the fence itself. There's also the concern about traffic around there. We're trying, we, we want cars to be able to see through a corner a little bit just so it's a safer environment. But what landscape we will provide will be inside the fence line so that we can, you know, kind of continue to buffer sightlines as best we can from this particular house on the top image. And we would continue to work with the neighbors, I'm sure, on Kennelworth Avenue.
Is that true for Hunter Road as well?
And Hunter, yeah, I don't know. I, I don't, I apologize. I did not take a kind of vignette of the Hunter Road elevation. of the Hunter Road elevation simply because we weren't doing anything along that edge. And could we improve the, I don't know how much space we have between the building and the fence, so here is, here's the area in question. There's 28 feet from the back of building to the curb line on Hunter Road. I'm sure that there can be some landscape improvements made on that buffer to the south here, I mean, sorry, to the east here, to improve that corridor as Hunter Road terminates to the north.
I think one of the questions was that pad on the north side?
This pad. So the landscape in that photograph, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the view from that bedroom really wouldn't be impacted in that existing landscape?
Your windows right over that, or windows right over that?
We look right at that.
It is, okay.
Where those red bushes are is where you're putting that pad.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought those set back along the, more proximate to the fence line.
Current fence line runs right to the edge of the building.
Okay.
But there's, after reviewing it with.
If you'd like to, you need to come up and identify yourself. State your name and address, please, thank you.
Yes, sir. My name's David Schlaggader, and I live at 12 Portside Court in Gray's Lake. I'm the ground superintendent at Indian Hill. I've been with the club for 26 years, working out of this site, and I work closely with the Lloyds and their friends. That, the picture from this, this picture here is from their bedroom window, and it's going to look right at that site. What this picture doesn't show, but the site plan shows, that we have about 20 or 25 feet to landscape that area between their window and the pad. And the club's ready to do that for them, as we have landscaped for them in other areas.
I'm looking at the landscape plan, page six, if you could turn to that.
Yeah, I think it shows five or six of the aisles, arboritees or something like that.
We have a lot of area there. I walk the area with them, we have a lot of area there for them, for us to landscape for them.
Move it up further so we can see Hunter Road.
Sorry.
There we go, that's good.
So, see this entire, this is the fence line here, but we've got this entire area here that we can landscape up for them, and we will. The landscaping on the south end, over here, I can, I guess I can use this. Those pine trees in Mr. Talty's pictures, we just did those in the last three years in response to a request from a neighbor. And as well, the arborites that Mr. Talty showed over here, we did those at the same time to help a neighbor out over there. We've been responsive to everybody as far as buffering our site.
So we have to put a special question for efficient?
Well, we try to be a good neighbor, and if there's something that we can do to help you.
Can you speak into the microphone, otherwise we can?
We've responded in every case to requests for landscaping or landscape maintenance. As well, we've volunteered and contributed to the Friends of Thornwood Park and helping them clean up. We've been a really good neighbor, and I'm proud of that.
I agree, and we also.
No, 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 sorry, sorry.
I would, if I just had a second, I would address this from Mr. Nelson, I would address the smell. The smell is a result of the dumpsters that we use now, we can't clean under them because they're sitting on dirt. When they get wet, there's nothing to clean up. So we're hoping to put them on a pad so that we can clean up what the rainwater diffuses out of the dumpsters. And as well, right now, the dirt is, the site is all dirt. It's really dusty in the summer. No one's brought that up, none of our residents have. I would have if I lived close by. By being able to keep the site clean, we're going to keep the dust down, too.
I do have one question for you. Where do, you know, there's a new, the new proposed parking lot, has 14 spaces, where on the site are those employees currently parking?
Let me show you. I'm getting to be good at this already. So the employees park up against the fence in a line right here, and they park from about this tree all the way to here, and they park right up against the fence. And that's where we're putting them. It's kind of high ground. The area is unimproved, we have one small drain and a little bit of asphalt right now that we operate out of. So we can get cars in this way, and then they get up here to this high ground and they can park there. Otherwise, days like today, the area is almost completely unusable.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
One other comment regarding stormwater management, which, there's not a project that the design profession is involved in today that isn't hypersensitive, especially on the North Shore, to the issue of stormwater management, and the fears of, you know, this development causing people's basements to flood. That's kind of the first thing, you know, first plan of attack. The site, although most of it is earth, is, has been compacted so profoundly through the years that there is, there is no absorption of rainwater. It simply sheds off the site in whichever direction it chooses to go on a given day from high to low. So by kind of re-engineering the site and providing for stormwater retention, detention, I'm sorry, not retention, there's no, there's no water going to be stored on site, it's going to be below grade, and it's going to gather water on property and will work in conjunction with the Village of Willmetz stormwater ordinances, and will be released in appropriate manners into the system along Kennelworth Avenue in a much more regimented way. And I promise you, it's not going to cause problems to any adjacent properties, it's going to improve them, if anything. So we talked about site lighting, we talked about operations and the intensity of operations, we talked about stormwater management, the parking of cars, the landscape issues.
Issue, I think one of the neighbors raised an issue, which, is there anyplace else on the compound that this could be cited?
Or even portions of it could be cited.
Portions of it. There is not, I'm sorry. We don't have, the property is maxed out, has always been maxed out. There's no, we're not, we're not keeping, you know, a couple acres, other than, other than this little triangle right here, there's really, there's no other open space available for us to develop a maintenance facility or portions of a maintenance facility where we could, where we could put some of this. If we could, we would.
Do you own the unincorporated portion there?
Yes, sir.
So did you consider putting anything there or not really?
At one point in time, we considered putting the employee center there, but it just, it's not big enough. It doesn't, it doesn't, and, and we thought that at some point in time, rather than put a pesticide facility, it's not a smaller, you know, programmatic element out there, that it's best to keep everything inside the fence where people can't see it. Because really, in walking the perimeter of this site, you can't see any of what goes on inside the property. You can see the existing maintenance building peeking up over the fence line, yes. You can see the east side of the maintenance building from Hunter Road, absolutely you can't. But until you get into the, you know, the second floor of the folks across the street, you really can't see, because the grade drops down around the perimeter of this property. The center line of Kennelworth Avenue is substantially below kind of the grade of the maintenance building to the north.
I guess my concern regarding what the neighbors have brought up is the noise issue, the cars.
Yes.
Coming in at, you know, sunrise, opening and closing the doors.
Trucks backing up.
Right, they do it now, they're not going to do it any more than they do now.
Okay.
So, again, the intensity of use is not going to change. The times of operation will not change. It's an active space, there's no question about it. Cars come in, as Dave said, a half hour typically before sunrise, it's early in the morning. They're going to park the cars in an orderly way, they're going to go in, they're going to get their marching orders for the day, and then they're going to disperse, but no more than they currently do today. So the truck activity, the pedestrian activity, the vehicular activity, the employee activity is not going to change from the way it operates today and, you know, for years past.
I guess I have a concern about the noise. You know, if I was, I just don't, I understand this just evolved over time.
Right.
You know, the maintenance building was there, and maybe at that time, you could get by with seven employees. So maybe they parked over here, and now, you know, the parking's grown. I'm just trying to respond to the neighbors concerned about noise. You know, if I lived across the street, I don't know if I'd want cars, you know, summertime, windows open, and all of a sudden, you know, it's a whole new thing, and what we have to look at as the zoning board is, you know, what are the hardships here that cause this? Typically, we have to have a hardship associated with the variance. The hardship in the first case tonight was the sighting of the property, and the, I don't know if you listened to that portion or not, but the house was on a small property, and there was no other option.
Correct, no, I listened to both the presentations.
So, you know, responding to the neighbors' concerns, you know, I would be concerned too about that backup area. So because it's.
The backup area, meaning what?
Of that adjacent to the existing maintenance facility, that pad.
This pad right here, okay, I understand.
So I guess, and not all the neighbors are present here, and we're supposed to do our best to represent them, as well as understand the applicant's requests. So, you know, it kind of, it's evolved, but it's evolved into now a commercial space, you know, fully paved.
I would say it's, it always has been what it is.
Or was it approved?
From a noise pollution standpoint, it's, it's not going to be any worse than it is now. Because again, there's no more equipment, there's no more cars, there's no more employees, there's no more intensity of use at all.
It's just, one consideration might be to, you know, I know it's great and convenient in the bad weather to have the lot right next to the building, but if you're already using the unincorporated parcel, maybe the, some of the parking could go there and just eliminate that, that parking.
Beyond site parking?
Yeah, but maybe relocate it, but then, I guess it's the same thing with the noise issue for the other people, so. I guess I'd like to hear what the other.
Yeah, we will, will, any other, any more comments from you, or any questions for the applicant?
No, sir.
No, we've finished with testimony from the neighbors, we've finished now, you have no more comments, we'll close, testimony?
Thank you.
I have a question before we.
Sorry, sorry.
So I guess the question is, are we going to be looking at what we have, or are we going to be looking at this with moving everything 25 feet?
Well, that's for the discussion.
Well, no, because, I mean.
Well. We're willing to move the buildings 25 feet to the north. But again, for clarity's sake, we're willing to move this all 25 feet in that direction to provide a greater buffer along Kennelworth.
Lisa, how would that, what would we have to do to amend?
But not the parking lot.
But the parking lot, leave the parking lot alone.
And why wouldn't you shift that a little, too? Is there a reason?
Because my fear is that as this all.
Oh, you wouldn't keep the rest as the same configuration?
Correct.
You can reconfigure it, okay.
I didn't understand that at all. I thought you were moving, everything has a block 25 feet north.
We're moving.
Moving all of the structures.
The structures, leaving the parking lot.
As well as the paved area.
We're leaving, yes, yes.
Everything shifts 25 feet.
Yes, but.
And the parking lot for the employees stays put.
Correct.
And why would you not move the parking lot?
Yeah.
The parking lot is conforming in its current condition.
Mm-hmm. But it would make sense to have it centered on the building.
Right, your building has a center entrance.
They could put the parking lot there today and not need any variations.
No.
I understand. We're not, I'm not saying that he has to. I'm just saying that if you're moving everything else.
If we can move the parking along with it, we'll happily, we'll happily do that.
I think that would go some way to helping people, helping the neighbors to accept it.
Okay.
As would some more detailed and perhaps more intensive landscaping plan.
So do we, Lisa, do we, does the applicant have to amend his request? How do we work this?
We would need a new site plan, and we would have to do a new analysis. We do not have enough information to amend it tonight.
If I could say, I feel that there's a degree to which we're discussing this on the fly. The sand silo was removed and a revised plan provided to us tonight that includes more impervious surface than was documented in the materials that we received in our packet, and moving forward with that makes me uncomfortable. There is a greater variance being requested than is documented in the papers we have.
In the impervious, I'm trying to compare.
The concrete pad for the dumpsters has increased, the impervious surface, as has the little concrete or asphalt pad just by the bin number one.
To that point, the impervious surface to the south, along the south property line, will be improved based upon what we're doing.
I'm just saying that the packet we received for this evening's meeting does not reflect the changes made to the plans that we received just this evening.
Understood. Lisa, what would be the best way for the applicant to proceed? Would they, would we not take a vote on anything today? Should the applicant ask for a continuance and provide us with what we discussed today and other changes? Is that the best way to do it?
If you would like the applicant to explore scooting things back 25 feet, we absolutely should continue.
And I would say, you know, I can see you're very responsive to your neighbors when they contact you, it sounds like you're a great neighbor, but maybe there are, you could benefit from maybe a meeting with some of these other neighbors that haven't been in communication with you, because when you talk about moving, shifting everything north, people on Kennelworth are happy. I don't know if the resident, you know, at this corner, they, you know, commented, well, you're just putting more in our view there. So, you know, I think that does need to be vetted and, you know, fully thought out on your end and on the resident's end.
Understood.
Could I also say, I realize that it sounds like we might be moving towards a continuance, but I also want to say that I'm concerned with the height of both the employee center and the environmental center. You showed the landscaping on the edge and then had a conceptual view of what the roof line on those buildings looks like, and those are tall buildings. And I have not heard a thing today that justifies the height of the employee center or the height of the environmental center exceeding the code. And you jumped immediately to a flat roof, and personally, that feels a little bit like a scare tactic.
No, 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 I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to scare anyone.
It can be a sloped roof. It can be a sloped roof and conform to the 15-foot height that the code asks of you.
We can, we can explore a very shallow pitched roof, there's no question about it. There was, there was a thought that this was more analogous to what a residential roof form would be versus a more industrial, you know, roof form would be. So that was the purpose of a steeper.
Part of the analysis is, I mean, let's say they decided to sell this off, and somebody built houses, I mean, you'd have roof lines that you'd be looking at, and they're marrying residential roof lines.
My kids would play with their kids because I was right across the street.
Yeah, they're 40 feet tall.
That's a completely different situation.
I don't, I don't view it as that, that different.
I, I do.
Okay, take these comments into account.
Understood.
Are you asking for, we need to, are you asking for a continuance to the next?
We'll ask for a continuance to the next meeting.
What would be the next date?
The next available date we have is December 4th. I don't know if that's going to be enough time.
Probably not.
We have December 18. We have January 15. We can keep going.
Okay, could, could we get back to you?
Lisa, can I contact you tomorrow?
You could, but if we don't continue to a specific date tonight, you would need to redo notice.
Let's say the 18th.
December 18.
December, okay. Move, move to continue this matter until December 18th?
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time, and thank you all the present.
Who has the second?
Who's the second? Well, but, well, I don't, I don't find it.
Race.
He doesn't want to. Two seconds. I'll defer to you.
Move to approve the meeting minutes for the Zoning Board of Appeals for Wednesday, October 16th, 2019.
That all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody want to speak about anything else? Please come up, this is the opportunity. Seeing no one, I will.
Anybody, I'm not sure the younger crowd, if they're here to.
Why don't you press that younger crowd over there?
Yeah.
That's my daughter.
Oh, okay.
I will deem this meeting closed. Thank you all very much for coming out.
Total info daily.